Followed immediately by the City Council meeting of April 2nd, 2025. We have approval amendments and correspondence by city clerk. We have no public hearings. We have ordinances on second reading. An ordinance to amend supplementary revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 vehicles in traffic, Chapter 1016, stopping, standing and parking, Section 101616-0, Schedule 36, special parking districts in regard to Troop Avenue. We have ordinances on first reading. Number one is an ordinance to amend supplementary revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 16 Land Development Code, amending 1616-040 about fees. Number two is a bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in and by the city of New Brunswick and the county of Middlesex appropriating $6,825,000. Number three has been pulled. Four is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank. We then have resolutions one through thirty. Number one is approve agenda amendments, two approve payroll, three approve refund for redeemed tax sales certificates, three authorize tax collector to transfer over payments on several tax utility accounts, five approve request for street closing and use of city sidewalk requested by our lady of Mount Carmel Roman Catholic Church for a Good Friday possession, six is approve awarded contract with Barbado Nursery Corporation, seven is approve relaxation of city noise ordinance and lane closure requested by Vinci Contracting in regards to a park foot cleaning truck in front of the 378 George Street. Number eight approve relaxation of city noise ordinance and lane closure requested by Connect One Optimum installing underground cable TV conduits. Number nine is approve amendment of resolution R0102440, a change order. Number two is final with AA Burns LLC to replace concrete curb sidewalks and driveways around City Hall. Number ten approve resolution authorizing a memorandum of agreement between the city of New Brunswick Police Department and the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office in regards to Veterans and Crisis Intervention Response Team. Number eleven is approve awarded contract with Adire Lucian's LLC furnished and delivered membrane modules for the portable water filtration system. Twelve is approve request for solicitation of funds requested by the Association of Latino Professionals American Alpha Rockers New Brunswick Chapter. Thirteen is approve agreement with Middlesex County Improvement Authority for collection of designated curbside recyclable materials. Fourteen approve awarded contract with Associated Humane Society Incorporated for kennel services for the Division of Human Animal Control. Fifteen approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance requested by Pike Construction Company LLC for new construction of Sterling Side Residence. Sixteen approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance and road closure requested by Max McCrane Works. Number seventeen is approve awarded contract with AcroSure LLC doing business as IMAC Insurance Agency for Risk Management. Eighteen is a resolution authorizing settlement of tax appeal with Verizon New Jersey Incorporated. Nineteen is approve request for use of city property and use of city sidewalk requested by Lincoln Elementary School in New Brunswick for education for Lincoln School Field Day. Twenty approve request for use of city property requested by Zeta Tau Alpha of Rockford University. Twenty-one is approve awarded contract with Pax Mundus Enterprises LLC. Twenty-two is approve request for street closure and use of city sidewalk requested by the New Brunswick Recreation Department in partnership with New Jersey Skate. Twenty-three is approve request for use of city property requested by the Valentina B. Valenti Community School in New Brunswick for the Valentina B. Valenti Community School Field Day. Twenty-four is approve refund of permit fee for Freedom Forever New Jersey LLC. Twenty-five approve amendment of resolution R072438, a recent additional amount of $50,000 with Tracer LLC. Twenty-six is approve rejection of bids for collection of designated recyclable materials. Twenty-seven approve request for use of city property requested by New Jersey United Athletic Club for the National Premier Soccer League. Twenty-eight approve request for use of city property requested by Che Epsilon Sigma National Latin Sorority Incorporated. Twenty-nine approve relaxation of city noise ordinance requested by Langin Engineering to support construction of the H2. Thirty approve request for use of city property requested by Rockford University for staff training at Beulah Park. We then have a public comment. We have please remember the next review session is April 16th followed immediately by the City Council meeting of April 16th. The meeting now comes to order. Hold on.
Councilmember Escobar here. Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming will be late. Councilmember Gaskins.
Here.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig.
Here.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Here.
Council President Anderson.
Here.
Please be advised that the notice requirement of the Open Public Meeting Act filed with and satisfied and that the annual notice would give sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the Municipal Council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate bulletin in City Hall, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely the home news. Would you please stand if you're able to join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You remain standing for a moment of silence, not only for our men and women in the military overseas, but on the recent death of Judge Norris Harding. We know he served at the city of New Brunswick for a long time and as a judge and personally known for some forty-five, fifty years. Thank you.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins.
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Madam clerk, has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate department?
Yes, Council President, the correspondence received by the city clerk's office was forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
We have no public hearings. We have an ordinance on discussion of second reading. Number one, an order to amend supplementary revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1016, stopping, standing and parking, Section 101616-0, Schedule 36, special parking districts in regards to Troop Avenue. Mr. Martinez? Is he here?
I'll be filling in. Mr. Martinez and Director Valenti are on vacation, so I'm in their place.
Okay, just explain a little bit about this.
I apologize, I don't have information on that today, but I can get it for you.
That's okay. Share.
This is a special parking district under our classified section of our ordinance. In layman's terms, it's an area in front of the church in this particular area, which they use, I believe, for dropping off patrons who may be handicapped or unable to walk into the entrance. So this codifies in our specific ordinance section, Schedule 36, this designated area as a special parking district.
Okay, thank you. Anybody, my fellow council members, have any questions or comments on this ordinance? Seeing none, we're preparing to open up the public meeting, public comment on this part for this part only, this second reading. If anybody has any, you both can come to the microphone. You have up to five minutes to give your name and address for the record and address your questions to myself. Seeing none.
Move the ordinance. Second. Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins.
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We now have ordinances on first reading, except for the one that's been pulled that the request is city. So we have number one, an ordinance to amend supplementary revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 16 Land Development Code, amending 1616-040, fees amending 1624030, definitions amending 1624260, fees and establishing 162025 waiver.
Move the ordinance setting down by April 16, 5:30 PM, same date PM. Second. Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins.
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number two is a bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in and by the city of New Brunswick and the county of Middlesex, New Jersey appropriating $6,825,000, therefore authorizing the issuance of $6,483,750 of bond or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof.
I move the ordinance setting down April 16, 2405, 5:30 PM, same date PM. Second. Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins.
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number three have been pulled. Number four is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank.
I move the ordinance setting down April 16, 2405, 5:30 PM, same date PM. Second. Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins.
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Okay, we now have resolutions one through thirty. Explain a couple of them. Captain, please. Okay, number ten, please.
Yes, the Special Crisis Intervention Response Team is a program that's sponsored by the Middlesex County Profsker's Office, and it basically trains law enforcement officers who are also veterans to respond within county to any calls for veterans that may be having mental health crisis situation, and they pay for the training and they facilitate the program. And by joining the memorandum of agreement, the municipal police department can use these resources if needed.
Thank you. We'll take a look at number twenty-six. Is there a bid there?
Yes. Councilmember of council, the city sought bids for recycling services. We, you'll also see right here, the city apparently shocked at the Middlesex County Improvement Authorities bid as well. When we bid the city as its own entity, the cost came in approximately $150,000 more per year. So we were going to ask to reject the bid for the city only, and further on in the resolutions, we're going to ask to accept the bid for the better price of the NCIAS cost.
Okay. Does any of my fellow council people have any questions on any resolutions?
On eighteen, did you hear the summation?
Yes. Mr. Councilor, members of council, this particular resolution authorizes a settlement of a series of tax appeals between the city of New Brunswick and Verizon, which date back to 2012, that have been filed year after year. This particular, or the particular issue that was sent to these appeals dealt with what's called the personal property tax that is being levied by the city of New Brunswick against certain hardware that Verizon historically utilized, copper, if you will. There were litigation that went on by other municipalities as well, and one being the Earl of Hope Well. And earlier, I should say, late 2024, a decision came down by the New Jersey Tax Court, I believe it went to the Supreme Court of New Jersey as well, which basically said that municipalities cannot, can no longer tax for that personal property, they interpreted the statute such that it was inappropriate. So I know Mr. DeSheno is here, gave you the legal explanation, but what happens with the effect of this resolution, if the council so authorizes, Verizon and the city and through their special tax council, Mr. Philozia has negotiated a resolution of all of these appeals whereby the city, going forward in 2025, will not tax on that personal property, if you will. There will be a refund of only one quarter of taxes for 2025 reflecting that portion of the assessment, and the city will not be required to pay back any taxes that were levied during that thirteen-year period or whatever they did.
Thank you.
Thank you. DeSheno, can I handle that? Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, that covers it pretty well.
Okay. And Pedro, so I assume that that's no longer a budget revenue or anything like that? Correct. Anybody else on any resolution? Okay, we're about to open up the public portion for resolutions only. Again, you have up to five minutes, one time up. Give your name and address for the record and tell us what number, item number you're talking about as a resolution so we can follow along.
Good evening. I'm Agent Charlie Cradenville, I'm the head of New Brunswick today, I live on Sedan Street here in town, and I'm grateful for the questions that were already asked because some of them were questions I had, but on number thirteen, the city re-upped the County Improvement Authority for Recycling. Is there anybody here who could tell us if the city is going to take this opportunity to switch to the other type of, you know, to trash cans that are on wheels?
Mr. Cradenville's asking about the recycling bids on those, or the trash?
I'm sorry, recycling.
This is, this is provided by the contract. I don't have any more information on that. I think that Mr. DeSheno's correct on that.
Thanks, I imagine Mr. Valenti probably does, but he's not here today. So my understanding from the County Improvement Authority meeting is that under this new contract, towns will have the choice, if they want, to transition everybody over to having one of the bigger recycling camps that's on wheels, and, you know, there's a lot of benefits to them, including that less stuff gets out in the streets and you have less litter all over the place. It's also, you know, it's done, you know, the vehicle itself does the pickups and you have less, less workers getting injured doing this work. So given what I heard at the County Improvement Authority meeting, this sounds like a good thing, and it's totally optional on a town-by-town basis. So if New Brunswick says we want to do it, it's if it's already in the contract, my understanding, no additional costs to the city. So I think it makes sense and hope that, you know, everybody goes that route. Number fourteen, I want to confirm, is it the same kennels the city has been using? I see Mr. Cradenville's nodding affirmatively. Okay, are there, was there any consideration of other kennels that are closer than the city of New York?
So this item goes for all the same purchasing as all city contracts do, and it's very difficult to find kennels in this day and age. Just over, I've visited this kennel, we continue the new service as the offer has promised, and that is, unfortunately, it's not, it's not as local as we'd like it to be, but it is best alternative for what we have.
Thanks. Number seventeen, the insurance, can I just understand, what is IMAC in relation to AcroSure? Is that a new name for the same firm that's been doing the work for the city, or is there some other changes?
Yeah, Council President, it's a subsidiary of AcroSure, so IMAC is an actual company.
Got it, got it. And just on the particulars of this contract, this is a renewal of a prior contract, or?
Council President, this is a new contract. Explain the law already in this contract.
Great. Got it, got it. So twelve months commencing today?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Already heard a lot about the Verizon tax appeal, so I don't have to ask about that. On the twenty-five, I wanted to ask about the stormwater utility platform. Can somebody tell me a little bit about this purchase?
I guess there's none, we should be here.
Your luck, Amelia.
Yes, Council President, council members, when we launched the stormwater utility, we needed a platform to manage the ERUs, as I mentioned, and things of that nature, as well as work orders. That went extremely well. In dealing with the system, we found seven other areas that we felt we could improve and put in place mandated systems by the EET and EDA regarding led service line identification, inventory, led service line portal, interconnections with other utilities, work order system for the water utility, and also for vacant abandoned properties.
Thank you. So what I'm hearing is you're adding additional modules to the program, the platform you purchased originally, is that correct to say?
Yes, the platform served its purpose for the stormwater utility, we saw the benefits and other areas that we could expand in it, so it is GIS-based and asset management system, and these are areas of improvement.
Thanks for that. I just do have to note, on the stormwater utility, there was a rate study done. I've asked for a copy of it for eight months now, and I still haven't gotten it, so I'd like to know when that document is going to become public. It was mentioned here as a justification for legislation on May 15th of last year.
Okay. So does we know something? I don't know. Pedro, do you know anything?
The rate study is an ongoing draft document that we use, so when it's put on the form, just prepare to go through and publicize it.
Any timeline, any expectation for when that might be? I've been asking for a while.
It's not as of then.
No timeline. Thanks.
Share.
Yes, Daniel Moore. Well, I heard a little bit, quite a little saying and what was told, with twenty, number twenty-six being rejection of bids. So basically on thirteen, will you please tell me, will we still be using the same company for recycling, or is this going to be another company?
Same company for now.
Well, like I said, due to where Mr. Cradenville had had spoken on that, due to where I've proven many a times, taken pictures, due to where majority of the litter from on the day of recycling and garbage, due to where, like I said, I didn't argue with the paint, paint the painting, I just paid $183 with the ticket, how basically everybody else's shit is rolled over on where I was ice this day, but due to where I, as Mr. Cradenville mentioned, I say it will be much better and much cleaner, due to where bins, due to where, what, on wheels, due to where they're much bigger, and then you don't have to worry about these bins blowing over when we have heavy wind, and then like I said, everybody else's stuff going on other people's property, and they're getting tickets for, for other people's stuff going on properties, where I would say, wow, that's a big thing, or how beautiful, how clean New Brunswick is, due to where, with their garbage trucks, due to where that's the kind of garbage cans that they have, due to where, what? You just flip it over and hook it up, and then it just flips over, none of it is left out, due to where, how, what, with this recycling company, due to where, ever since you switched to them from the other waste management, due to where, what, where it wasn't no problem, just because it's lower, now what, due to where the way these gentlemen, empty, don't check and see if the cans are empty, just turn them over, when the owner or whoever comes out and picks them up, you'll see all, all the recycling that's all underground, due to where, what? Honestly, what, are you teaming up with this? How many, ever since you've been had this, I've proven, and I've taken the pictures and proven, due to where, what, there's some type of teamwork, due to where I know the city lied before, saying, due to where, oh, how the city cans used to be free, the recycling bins used to be free, and then due to where you saying, okay, no more longer than putting plastic, putting recycling in plastic bags, that's been three years now, due to where, what, that was just to get owners to pay the $9.99 to get their cans, because I still see recycling being put in white clear bag, and it's being taken. So I'm just really wondering, are you doing, doing this, due to where, just like I said, what, so the city can make more money on giving people, residents tickets, due to where, what, majority of the litter in New Brunswick, due to where it's on garbage day and recycling day? And it's not like, wow, you know, like I said, what I said, what some of you, just goes in one ear and not the damn other ear, it's not like I haven't proven to you, I proved to Mrs. Aaron, I proved to, what, what, taking the pictures here and showed you, due to where, what, even with this, with this company, due to where, driving the wrong way down, down one-way streets, going the wrong way, due to where, please look into it, like I said, sometimes it's not worth paying lower to have something, it's about having it done the right, the right way. And I, and I hope you understand, due to where, what, okay, I can pay lower, for example, ooh, I can pay for a nicer bed, $500, ooh, lasts so long, ooh, wow, I paid for a bed $2,400, wow, I still got the bed, twenty, twenty years later, the same one quality, if you understand what I'm saying. Stop thinking about the less, and please think about New Brunswick, because New Brunswick was never this damn dirty before, and never with all these rodents running up and down pure daylight, never, forty-eight years, born and raised here, thank you.
Anyone else on the resolutions only at this time?
Yes. Just response to some of Mr. Moore's questions. Then we'll remember that Mr. Valenti recently put forward by council a purchase of a garbage truck that will, center topic, but that will accommodate the roll-out carts the city has been putting out throughout the city with that arm that she mentioned. And she's right, roll-out carts are helpful in reducing the runoff that comes from trash pickup. So I'm sure that in his consideration, he'll just look at that clause and make a decision. In our own analysis, there are certain streets that you can't operate a vehicle that size, so I think that makes consideration as well. But I think that the roll-out program on the trash side has been successful, and I'd love to be of clarification.
Thank you very much. Anybody else again? Nothing? Seeing none.
Move the resolutions. Second. Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins.
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We're now going to the public portion of the meeting. Once again, you'll have up to five minutes, one time up at this time. If you give your name and address for the record, and commence, whatever you have.
Hello, City Council, Percy Cunningham, Hamilton Street. I'm here to talk today about the homelessness issue, as I always do. I haven't seen any improvements in the last few weeks since the last time we spoke, and obviously that's extremely frustrating and disappointing, given that it is essential that every person has a place, a home, a place where they can rest their head. I don't understand why I have to go to so many meetings, I've been to so many meetings, I'm so tired of so many meetings. I'm tired of talking to, trying to talk to the mayor, I'm tired of talking to Keith Jones, I'm tired of talking to Ed Devoe, I'm tired of talking to every single one of you. I don't understand what the problem is. I ask, is it about the money? No, no, county is the money. I go to the county, I talk to the county, county says, we have money, New Brunswick don't want money, okay? Why in New Brunswick? We don't want money. I don't understand, right? Like, why are people on the street? That's a failure, period, okay? So we're failing to make sure that people are off the street. Then I get told some audacious, I'm holding my stuff back, some audacious stuff, okay, about how, oh, these people are coming from other parts of Middlesex County, we don't want them here, they shouldn't be here. I don't remember Jesus giving about that. I really don't think he did. I don't think Jesus did, and I don't think any moral person would be questioning whether or not someone deserves help because of what town they grew up in in Middlesex County. It's Middlesex County, who cares? I don't care. I want everybody who comes to New Brunswick, because they are coming here, they have a right to be here. they have a right to be here, just as much as the rich white people that you're moving in, your stupid, stupid, stupid high vessels. Okay? You will not drive us out. You will not. We have a right to be here. These are long-term New Brunswick residents that are getting kicked out because of the policies that you are putting into place that are allegedly supposed to keep people who are just from Middlesex County out. That's insane. It's anti-human. It's not taking any. And you know what? I will say this. The people who are actually working on Code Blue, kind, nice, sweet, gentle people. The issue is not the people doing the services. It is the policy itself. It is the refusal of this administration, yes, the mayor, and all of you, the city council. You guys are my elected representatives. I am tired of getting the runaround from a bunch of people who were not elected. Not elected. You are just protecting yourself from criticism by trying to offload those questions onto lower people, who I did not elect. I elected y'all. You are responsible for this. And shoving it off, we're not going to take that anymore. That is not a good enough excuse. I am tired. I am tired of seeing my friends on the street. That's it. I'm tired of my friends on the street. You laugh at them. You laugh at them. Because you don't care. You do not care. And that is insane to me. Your mothers will be ashamed, ashamed, truly. Because when someone comes here and says they want to help, why? Why would you treat them poorly? Why? It doesn't even make sense. There are easy, simple solutions. Simple solutions that we have outlawed over and over again in every single meeting. You are making choices, choices to not make those things happen. You're deprioritizing it. I'm not saying that you're not busy. I'm not saying you're not working on other things. But you are deprioritizing the most vulnerable in our city and allowing them to sleep on the street, to go hungry. That's what we're talking about here. That's it. I just want everybody to be housed. I just want everybody to have dignity. I don't feel like that's a crazy thing to ask government to make sure happens. Because let me tell you, I don't have the money. That's why I pay taxes. That's why we pay taxes. We pay taxes so we can collect the right money, so we can do big things and take care of big problems. Thank you so much.
Will you please get that to Mr. Shami? Mr. Shami? Hi, yes, I'm just going to say, as I do on Facebook first, with condolences to Brandon, the young gentleman, sixteen, who shot on the corner of Lee and Rucker Street. And also, I'm going to say my, which I should like condolences to even the police department and the best known as Power J. His real name is Jabil Redest, due to where someone I've been looking after, helping for a good while, and I also grew up with him. But please, we have a bunch of crooks here. One point one million dollars to help with addiction. Please tell me, when is the damn city going to do? Do something to help? Or I told you ideas already. Give them something to do. What, the bank is open, like where Mayor Cahill had his dinner for, 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 the deal with his black Democrat class? Put pool table in there. Put music in there. Wait, you have a mental center on Joyce Comer Avenue, due to where that's what they do. Why, and I told you, explained it with addiction. But now, to get, jump to conclusion, due to my point, that paper that I just gave you, Mr. Shami, and I'm speaking on this matter. Now that I know you're Tracy Benari's boss, where I will take action at you, due to where this paper was from October nineteenth, stating that she was to send the body cameras from February two thousand twenty-four to my defendant lawyer, whether it's the lawyer where she's hiding. And like I said, now I'm going to thank you. I'm glad Captain Godowski is in here. I will say, at the time, he was the only one that believed in me, helped me, when I said Alexander Yunes was following me instead of Nicholas DeFalco. Oh, you do know, you do know Alex Yunes is not the only one that drive nine sixteen. Every picture, every time I saw him, due to where what? It was a picture of Alexander Yunes. I will say, I have the recording, due to where Alexander Yunes is not to come down near me, unless it's an extreme emergency. Then that was where, also, I spoke on, due to where he came to my house with some, I don't have the officers right now. Excuse me, I'm in severe pain with my arm, even though I just had six injections into my back. It's not, it's not that, due to where it's, it's to help me, due to where I have to keep leaning so many ways, due to where because of my shoulder, by injured by New Brunswick Police Department. And we will get on the road with this, because you will not get away. But like I said, Alexander Yunes, where I have on video with Captain Godowski, that he is not to come down near me, and then come in my house, moving stuff, due to where I was told when I requested the video from City Court, I got better young ladies who explained it to me. I spoke to Captain Adam Shaw, where he explained, okay. And I spoke to the lieutenant, the lady I had record, due to where for domestic violence, I want the video that where he came in my house, where I have, I have legal mace demanding, throwing my stuff, demanding that I have bear mace. But wow, how the hell does he sneak a can of police OC spray? Four ounces of Tameka Robinsons? In the video, due to where I mentioned to you, what? That's one of the damn reason why the city does not want to, where, give up the body, the body booking camera, due to which, ring to the judge and all how many damn times? Due to where what? Covering for Alexander Yunes? And due to where what, a few other officers? But like I said, I thank you for really, like I said, taking the time. You were the only one over internal affairs that really took the time to look at my evidence. And due to where, like I said, what, is he still coming near me? And I mean, I want the videos, due to where they said, Tracy, this is domestic violence. This is not over request through them. This is domestic violence. And I tell you, I'm guaranteed, I was told to go get it after court next week. And I'm telling you now, since I've been telling you all this time and not knowing you were in charge of Tracy Benari, what, if I do not get my two videos from, due to where what? After James Hobbit dismissed my case, so I was assaulted, due to where this was all a damn setup by New Brunswick Police Department, Middlesex County Prosecutor, and the judge, due to where what? I had a busted blood vessel. But now, with me getting assaulted again, and where you made Tameka Robinson, oh, put the pieces together. What a setup. I'm asking you nicely, but if not, I will go against you, even though you're boss, I will follow lawsuit against you, due to where you are in charge of her to do the right thing.
Thank you.
Mr. Council President, if you'd like to just explain.
Let me just hear what he has to say.
Okay, just move away from the microphone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I think the record should reflect that Ms. Moore handed me a notice of motion to compel production of body worn cameras that was filed apparently by Pablo Castro law firm back in October of two thousand and twenty-four, seeking body worn camera footage from an incident that occurred back February first, two thousand and twenty-four. Now, I just want the record to reflect that everyone to be totally clear about my particular discovery clerk's role. This Benari does not have authority to release anything that she's not given to release. She's merely a discovery clerk. She can request from the police department body worn camera footage if they don't provide it to her. She doesn't obviously supply it. I can't tell the council what happened in this particular case. But what I could say is, this is an actual motion that was filed before the court. If Mr. Pablo Castro and the municipal prosecutor have heard this matter before the judge, which I don't know if they have or have not, ultimately, the judge will decide whether or not anything is released or not released. It's not my employee who was holding some type of evidence or body worn camera back from Ms. Moore. She has no independent authority to release anything. She's a discovery clerk who's given paper, and then she gives paper to someone else. That's all it is. Or in this case, I guess, if she were given footage of a body worn camera footage, she would give it to the requester if she was so authorized to do so. And I have to assume in this particular case that that did not occur. So this motion, I would defer to the court to see exactly what Judge Hobish would decide after argument of counsel and the municipal prosecutor. It's as simple as that.
Thank you for explaining full detail.
Anyone else? Good evening, once again, Charlie Cradaville, New Brunswick Today. And I do also want to start by saying, rest in peace, Corinda Romero. We cannot allow this to be normalized. A sixteen-year-old had their life end at age sixteen in broad daylight in the streets of New Brunswick. And, you know, I've won, we're not okay with that. We need to do something about this. And I think that the silence from the powers that be is deafening. So do you have any thoughts on the murder of a sixteen-year-old boy in our city?
Yeah, it's a tragic thing. It's a terrible thing. I don't have any rightful answers or anything. I don't think anybody does. But it takes a village. I mean, between the police, families, education, everything has to go on. You know, gangs and guns are a terrible thing that's ruining New Brunswick. And I know that we're working on it, unfortunately. Things just don't go the way we want it sometimes.
Well, thanks for responding. I do think that the city can and should do more. I don't have all the answers. But at least, as far as I know, the perpetrator is still on the loose. Can you confirm that for me? Has there been any arrests made? Captain, do you have any word?
I'm not going to comment on an unknown investigation in the prosecutor's office, who would be the primary agency for all questions to that.
Okay. What I will note is, I did receive a press release from the prosecutor's office. It had an error in it. And I don't believe the prosecutor's office press release was shared out through any city communications channel. So correct me if I'm wrong, but it wasn't posted to the city website, wasn't issued as a Nixle alert, wasn't shared on social media. The city has this policy that's kind of crazy, where if somebody gets shot, you announce it on Facebook. But if they die, you don't. So I don't, I don't quite get why that is. Am I mistaken? Has the city done anything?
I think there was a press release.
Yes, press release from the county. And I'm asking, did that information get to send it through any city government channels? Like, like happens when it's a non-fail shooting.
I thought it was sent out from the city and the police department or?
It's, just to be clear, it's a joint press release. It says it's from New Brunswick and Middlesex County. But I'm saying, you've got Facebook, you've got Nixle, there's a killer on the loose. Presumably, you want to, you know, bring them to justice. Why, why aren't you sharing that information? And say, you know, if you had information, call such and such detective. Why, why isn't the city using its channels?
Well, I think the police department is using all the channels they need to do it this time.
Okay, well, I didn't seem to do any channels, at least to us.
I'm going to investigate.
I understand. I just, I'm trying to make the point that the city can and should do more. You're acknowledging it as a problem. This is ruining our city. That's your words. What are we doing about? Is my question. And I don't think just having blind faith that the police are always going to do everything they can, or always going to do the right thing, is going to lead us to the right outcome, because we know better, I have. On move on. I brought up the last meeting, the possibility of having a bilingual component, having live interpretation for Spanish speakers at these meetings. Is that something the council is going to consider implementing?
We'll think about it.
Okay. When is the homelessness roundtable?
The fourth Thursday of every month.
Fourth Wednesday.
Fourth Wednesday. Fourth Wednesday.
Was it the fourth Wednesday of last month?
It was changed, it was a conflict. I think that it was changed last week. I would say that was outside of state. It was, it was, it was changed.
How was it announced?
I'm not in charge of it, but I got an email indicating that it was changed.
Yeah, I didn't get one certainly. Like, I would have wanted one.
I don't think I know to like it to be.
Yeah, please, please. You should always add New Brunswick Today to your invitations. New Brunswick Today wants to be there. We want to bring the camera. We want to document what's going on. If you're having an announcement, it's ridiculous that the city has, for no good reason, removed us from the press list and you don't tell us things. That's counterproductive. And frankly, it's been said many times here, it's the fourth Wednesday of the month, fourth Wednesday of the month, fourth Wednesday of the month. You guys should come here. You guys should come here. Well, guess what? You changed it and you didn't tell us, so we missed it.
Yep.
And that's true for many people. We're not the only ones. You know, Carlos was here waiting to cover it, and he missed it. And I think that's, you know, a mistake on your part, right? The city screwed up, and you need to take ownership of it. And you need to do a better job about promoting the meetings that you have. And I do have one other issue I'd like to speak about. I have just another minute.
Thirty-two.
Okay. Interesting stuff, the housing authority, developers. They're finally starting to look into which developers are doing what they say they're going to do. Jersey Avenue, two projects. Neither of them are on schedule. They're both delinquent on what they've promised. Jack Morris and his company has two projects. One of them is delinquent, and the other one, he's asked, his company's asked not to have the, not to have the hearing yet. Ultimately, the end result is less, less housing. The projects that are moving forward are the Helix, which has no housing, and Russo, the giant Russo project of seven hundred units, but none of them affordable.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville.
Did you have any comments on these developers? Please look into the Jersey Avenue ones. It's a huge letdown. We're supposed to do six hundred.
Anyone else for the public who's to comment on anything?
Hello. I was on for East Van Street. So I don't, you know, at these meetings, we've spoken a great deal about Code Blue. And now that we're at the time of the season, it's getting warmer. And we should be thinking about what, what services need to be provided then. And I know there's a recent change in the site for Code Blue, which seems to be a great improvement. Is that new site that's now being used for Code Blue the same site that will be used for Code Red? Can you just confirm that fact? That's the intention.
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Great, I just wanted to make sure that that was the case. And then an earlier speaker had, you know, some frustrations about, you know, slow or no action to address the overall issue of homelessness in our city. I think we all can all acknowledge that's a major issue that deserves more attention than it's getting. One comment that was made was that the county was saying to them that there is more money available that New Brunswick has not taken them up on that offer. I just want to understand, is that the case? And if so, why?
Know anything about that, Sharon?
We apply for the Code Blue grant based on projected expenses for Code Blue. And that's one issue that we have with the county on that grant. I don't know what we should refer to.
When we are having those conversations with the county, are we just expressing here's what we think it will take to run things the same as we've run things? Or are we also saying, here is what we would like to offer additionally and asking them for more money for that?
The Code Blue program is set forth by, as the statutes have been exposed about, it's an emergency program. And there are guidelines for how we run that program. And those guidelines are priced accordingly. And that's how the grant is based. That's singular relationship with that grant.
Council President, I just want, I have a question. Who is the person in the county that said that we deny? I know what I know. Can somebody name that person?
I asked, no, I talked to the county people, talked to Melissa.
Who is the county people? Can I have your name?
Melissa. Melissa said, said that you guys have only applied for Code Blue. Melissa.
Melissa? Melissa from Coming Home?
No.
So who's who?
She has a last name.
She works for the county.
There's a few Melissas.
She's in Human Services.
Melissa Lewis, Melissa Lewis, because Melissa.
And just to clarify what I said, what I said, well, okay.
Go ahead.
All right, well, I didn't say that there was, that New Brunswick was, you know, rejecting money, that's not what I said. I said they're not asking for more, but we deserve more.
I mean, to be clear, I'm fine with the additions that are, that are being made by the previous speaker, I feel like, you know, it's helpful to clarify the facts, it's helpful to have a dialogue, you know, I, I wonder if, if we had not allowed the, the previous speaker to come back and answer that question, how, how many emails and how many months would go by before we got to the place that we just got to right now, so I think that that's actually very helpful. I'll just, you know, end by saying that we should always be trying to do more, I'm sure there, you know, I know there's a lot of people that are working very hard on this, you know, even just within the confines of Code Blue, obviously, the need for that service exceeds the capacity that it currently has, there's a lot of people that need it, and, you know, to whatever degree possible, we should be seeking out additional resources, proactively asking for additional resources to expand what we have currently, instead of just maintaining it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Hello, my name is Chris, I'm a community member, last night I was here, I asked you what you would do to be protecting the First Amendment rights of not only Rutgers International students, but our community members, you said there's nothing we can do, so I spent the last two weeks emailing civil rights lawyers and immigration lawyers, and only had to go on the ACLU website to realize that's untrue, so I am just going to help you out with some things first, I'll start outlining actions that you can encourage Rutgers, take them to safeguard the rights of our students, this information can be found on the ACLU New Jersey website, so if you need to reference it. First, you can call on Rutgers to make sure they're rejecting federal cash parents, to surveil or punish students of faculty members who are non-citizen for their constitutionally protected speech, uphold free speech protection for everyone on campus regardless of nationality, ensure that campus policies on political speech and protest are viewpoint neutral, protect student privacy, and resist unlawful government requests for personal information, uphold Fourteenth Amendment and title five protections for all. So additionally, here are some things you can do to protect the rights of our community as whole. Language accessibility, I think that was touched on in the beginning, many community members have expressed difficulty in accessing services offered by the city, due to language barriers, this makes even attending this meeting a challenge. We are fortunate to have a beautiful, diverse city that houses people who speak many, many different languages, I think it could be better. Corporate contributions, so many huge corporations are coming into New Brunswick and not investing in our community members, this is a time that you can call on them to invest in services for our immigrant communities, including support for their legal fees, support language access laws, this council should prioritize the development of a language access law to ensure that all community members can fully participate in services, additionally, safeguarding their personal information is central. There's always something you can do, just have to look for it. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Say anything? Seeing none?
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Burson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin. Councilmember Sephora Ledwig. Council President Vasconyera.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes.